A warrant being issued for this special town meeting with Councilor Warner. The warrant for this special town meeting was signed by the Board of Selectmen on November 8th, 2010. It was published in the November 11th, 2010 edition of the Middleborough Gazette and was posted by Constable James Bowles on November 10th, 2010. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the General Bylaws of the Town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. Before I continue, would everyone who is a voter please find a seat? Otherwise, I'm going to have a problem in the back. For this meeting, I have appointed Bruce Spooner as Assistant Moderator for the cafeteria in case we fill to capacity in the auditorium this evening. The moderator and town clerk have appointed the following as tellers for this town meeting. On the left side of the auditorium, Marilyn Hunt. On the right side, Bob Canessa. The center front and stage, Leanne Cataldo. And the center rear, Joanne Upham. If we use the cafeteria this evening, which so far has been like it's going to happen, we have a Section A and a Section B. Section A will be counted by Dan Hopkins and Section B will be counted by Joe Chamberlain. All the above have been sworn in by the town clerk. This meeting will be operated in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, the Town's General Bylaws, and by precedent of prior town meetings. While the Town Bylaws address some of the parliamentary procedures, prior town meetings have relied upon the volume of town meeting time as the standard for conduct at Lakeville Town Meetings, and it is my intention to continue this presentation. You will note that two microphones have been positioned in each of the two aisles. I ask that if you seek recognition from the moderator, you go to one of the two microphones. You must be at a microphone to be recognized by me. When recognized by the moderator, state your name and if you would like to identify your address, feel free to do so. If you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing, and after stating your motion, please present it to the moderator so the clerical habit is part of the official record of the meeting. This part is a little bit critical. Unlike many towns, we have no standard relative to the length of time someone may speak. Generally, that has not been an issue. However, I will exercise my prerogative to keep the meeting moving if I find that the speaker repeats the same points or other speakers repeat the same points that he or she has already raised. At a prior town meeting, we did have a number of people who did speak to the same point and it became tedious. So I'm asking the indulgence of the people of Lakeville to please introduce any new issue you wish, but don't make it a long line of "I support" and "I'm against." You can do that when you vote. Shouting from seats, booing, and cheering individual speakers is not permitted. Any member who interrupts the town meeting in unacceptable ways will be escorted out. Such a member may not return, so please don't lose your vote. Stick to acceptable town meeting behavior. As has been past practice, I will allow the maker of a motion an opportunity to speak on the motion before recognizing anyone else. After the maker of the motion has had an opportunity to speak, I will seek the recommendation of the Finance Committee. Then, any other registered voter may speak on the article in question. When the motion comes to a vote, I will ask that you hold up the purple-colored voting card issued to each registered voter when you arrive this evening and were checked in. During the voting, if I can easily determine the quantum of vote, I will ask you to lower your cards. However, if there is a counted vote, I will ask you to hold up your voting card and keep it elevated so that the teller can see it and count the votes in your section. The use of the voting card will assure that only the votes of registered eligible voters are counted. Your voting card has "yes" and "no" printed on it. This is printed in case we have a ballot vote. We may not use it as a ballot, but we have it just in case. Do not lose your voting card. Some of you remember someone who did it the last meeting. You cannot get another one this evening. Just a quick review of motions to reconsider and rescind. A motion to reconsider can only be made by one who voted on the prevailing side. A motion to reconsider is acceptable only if new information has come to light that might have caused members to vote otherwise had they had the information earlier. A motion to reconsider is not acceptable simply because many people have left. This is a parliamentary ploy and it will not be allowed. A motion to reconsider must pass by a two-thirds vote by a Lakeville Bylaw, and by that past town tradition, a motion to reconsider an article can only be made once. I would like to remind you that no food or drink is permitted in the auditorium except from order. Before we begin the special town meeting, I would like to call your attention to those residents of Lakeville who are active in town government and who have passed away since our last town meeting. Emil J. Garia, who served as Civil Defense Director, Fire Engineers and Fire Chief, Forest Lorden, and Patrolman. And Edwin A. Bolisov, who served on the Finance Committee from 1968 to 1973 and was an election officer from 2004 to 2010. I'm going to ask you to stand while I ask for a moment of silence and then remain standing as I lead you in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, maybe see you. Finally, I would like to introduce those of us on the stage. To my immediate left, Janet Tracy, the Town Clerk, Rita Gaba, Town Administrator, Mark Rich, this evening's Town Counsel, Nancy Yates, Selectman, Derek Maxey, Selectman, Stephen Olivier, Selectman, Mike Petruzzo, Finance Committee, Melissa Hopkins, Finance Committee, Ted Bun, Finance Committee, Norman Oro, Finance Committee, Don Healy, Finance Committee, and Cindy McCray, the Town Accountant. Does anyone require a copy of the Town Warrant? If you don't have a copy, raise your hand and the teller will bring a copy to you. There's one person back there. It doesn't happen. I ask that all voters find a seat, please, in the interest of the fire laws, and we cannot count your vote if you're standing. We all set? Now that all of us have a copy of the warrant, I will seek a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Motion has been made. Do I hear a second? There is usually no debate. All in favor, please raise your cards. This is exercise. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no opposition. We waive the reading of the warrant. Second item is that we have to approve non-residents being able to speak. They may or may not speak, but we do it ahead of time so that we can move right along. Christopher Peck, Superintendent of Streets, Johnny McCarthy, Superintendent of Schools, who by law can speak anyway, but I just bring it up. Laurie Hunter, Principal Assawamseut School. Does anyone object to any of those people speaking? I hear no objection, and I will take it therefore as a unanimous vote of those present. Somebody have Article 1?
Call first Regional School Committee. I move that the Town vote will amend the amendment between the towns of Freetown and Lakeville, Massachusetts with respect to the formation of a regional school district, most recently amended in 2001 to create a pre-K through 12 regional school district in the form approved by the School Committee on October 20th, 2010, which amendment includes but is not limited to the establishment of the manner of nominating and electing members of the Regional School Committee, establishment of a regional finance committee, the location and leasing of schools in both towns, and appropriament and payment of costs incurred by the district, student transportation responsibilities, admission of additional talents, withdrawal from the district, termination of the agreement, and the incurring of debt set forth on the handout entitled Agreement Between the Towns of Freetown and Lakeville, Massachusetts with Respect to the Formation of a Pre-K Through 12 Regional School District.
Thank you. Does there a second? Before I go on, will people kindly shut off all electronic devices in here? Midway through, we've got a child crying on somebody's phone. It's very rude. I'm going to ask the maker of the motion to speak to the motion as I indicated, so... Sir, do you wish to speak or turn your microphone to someone who is going to speak in that in behalf of the motion?
I would like to delegate it to the Chairman of the Committee, actually to John McCarthy, the Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, and good evening. Tonight, we are going to give you a very brief PowerPoint presentation as I speak to the benefits and some of the concerns about full regionalization. We've been at this for a very long time, obviously. This goes back, starting back in 2007, when this actually began, this most recent effort, long before I ever arrived on the scene. And since that time, there have been multiple meetings. There has been a full regionalization committee that was in place drafting an agreement. There has been a lot of input, changes, reviews by legal counsel, and in the end, it is being brought to you tonight for consideration by the Town of Lakeville. As soon as the PowerPoint is up, we'll be ready to go. But again, I will just speak briefly to myself, and I've been with you now for a little over 15 months as your Superintendent. And as I said, this started long before I arrived in town, and I've learned in studying the history of these communities that there's been several other efforts as well to fully regionalize the schools in this district, some which made it to town meeting floor, others that did not. But tonight, we're going to consider this question again, and I beg your consideration of how did we get here, to just understand the position that we are in as a community. We have a very proud heritage in our schools. You are proud of your schools, you're proud of Assawamseut, but you're proud of all of your schools.
John, I'm going to interrupt you for a second so that we can vacate the stage.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So anyways, as we look at how did we get here, we all know that we're in a very challenging fiscal climate, and that has been the case for the last three years, and going forward, it's not getting any easier. The latest efforts at full regionalization, as I just explained, have been in place since 2007, which brings us to tonight. There are three important areas of consideration that I will focus on tonight, and again, some other people will speak, obviously, later to financial implications and language of the new agreement. But first of all, the educational benefits. What struck me the day I arrived in this district, the first day I walked into Assawamseut Elementary School and Freetown Elementary School, were the large class sizes that I found in each of those schools, better than 30 children in those classrooms. And we realized at that time, and I realized at that time, we needed to do something about that, that educationally, that was not sound and was going to impact our entire school district down the road. So tonight, you're going to hear a lot about the financial implications, you're going to hear a lot about the language of the new agreement. Let's not lose sight of the children in these classrooms, in these schools, because when the discussion focuses on the educational benefits, then it becomes clear that we need to do something to change the course, that the current situation status quo is not okay. To speak to the educational benefits, it makes it basically this simple, and I know this is not a simple issue, but when you look at it from this perspective, what we're looking to do as a single district is essentially combine our financial resources together to direct those to the greatest educational needs. That's what a single school district does. Right now, as three districts with three separate budgets, we cannot do that effectively. Our number one problem, as I just defined, is lowering class sizes in the elementary grades, and that will become clear in a few minutes as to why. And we have to address the one-grade transition of Grace, grade five into middle school. I'm going to share this chart with you. It may be difficult to see, but this chart looks at MCAS performance and class size of communities that surround us that are in a partial region, such as the old Rochester region, or do not have a high school that they're designated to send their children to yet. Berkeley tuition students into Somerset, they have just formed an agreement with Somerset for 9 through 12. But these are communities that are compared to our school district by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. What it shows you is last year's MCAS scores, and I essentially ranked the districts by looking at the combined ELA and math scores. Just added those two up and then ranked them, so you can see that of these districts, Freetown and Lakeville rank near the bottom, Lakeville is essentially tied with Berkeley, but nevertheless, we are near the bottom. And if you look over to the far right-hand side, this is something you won't find on the DESE website, but I was able to get from local superintendents. I asked them last year, what were your class sizes in grades three and four, and I compared those to our class sizes in Lakeville and Freetown, grades three and four, and as you can see, 22 to 20 is the range of class sizes in those districts, and Lakeville and Freetown are at 30 and 31 when these children took the test. Now, I'm not going to stand here and say that class size is the only thing that may be mattering here, but it does have an impact. And for those of you who have children in those classrooms, you know what that impact is. For those of you who don't, who are taxpayers, you know that the value of your property is tied in to a certain degree to your school system, the quality of your school system. And people will look at your school system when they look to buy your home, and they'll look at MCAS scores, they'll look at class size. Those are the things that parents typically look at when moving into a community. Now again, MCAS is not the be-all and end-all measure of the quality of a school system. There are many other factors that go into that. I know that, your teachers know that, your principals know that, and the parents know that. You know that there are things that make a difference in your schools beyond MCAS, that make our schools very good. The problem is, is that the outside public will take this data, and they say, "Well, I don't know if I'm going to buy in Freetown or Lakeville because I'm looking at those class sizes and I'm looking at those MCAS scores, and I'm concerned about that." Why does class size matter? It's very simple. Grades K to 3, children are learning to read. From grade four on, they read to learn. Though K to 3 is when they learn their basic literacy skills, that's where they get the foundation. From fourth grade on, they're reading to learn. It's a fine distinction, but it's an important distinction to make, because again, we happen to have children at grade level by grade four, or we're going to spend an inordinate amount of time and resources trying to catch them up, and many of them never will catch up, and many of them will fall into special education, as I'll show you in a minute. We have a rise in special education population and cost. It costs more to educate a special education pupil than it does a regular education pupil. Here are the numbers and percentages that we have in each of our five schools. You can see, they range from Freetown, a pre-K to four, is 13% up to Grace, which currently has a specialized population of 22%. The district average is 19%. Just as comparison, the state average is 17%, the national average is 13%. And I've always said, and I've been consistent about this, that I believe that our communities should be below the state average when it comes to special education population. Now, why it causes a dilemma for us is when you have the higher class sizes, you have more students not achieving, you have more special ed referrals, and if they qualify for special ed, and again, there has to be a distinction between their cognitive ability and their academic achievement in order to qualify, but if they qualify, as many of our children are, that increases your SPED cost. If you increase your SPED cost, you have less money for regular ed, creates higher class sizes again. We're stuck in this cycle, and we have to find a way to break out of this. We also have what I like to call the Grace Dilemma, and this is a real head scratcher for us to try to figure out how to work this problem without full regionalization. Those of you who are parents out there, most of you are, have been, know that transitions are very difficult for children. Students are most vulnerable when making those transitions. For children, two of the most difficult transitions they make are into middle school and into high school. That's when some of them get off track. And again, we have a problem with transitions in this school district, where we have that one-grade transition. Generally agreed upon in education that you should not have a grade span less than three grades. Right now, Grace is one school, one grade, grade five only, 264 students. That's it. A one-grade transition makes it very difficult to track academic progress, more students fall through the cracks, creating a problem down the road. Now, when you look at Lakeville and Grace, Lakeville had been using Grace in fourth grade up until a couple of years ago, when the financial crisis hit. When they took that 20% budget cut, Lakeville moved their fourth grade back. That saved the town half a million dollars approximately in costs that they were incurring at Grace because they had to pay a portion of the principal, the maintenance, and all of those costs that they incurred, they were chargebacks. They saved about $500,000. Some positions were cut back, the region saved some money too in that, okay? But nevertheless, that budget cut basically moved the grade four back into Assawamseut. The problem with moving Grace back, and it is possible, we'll talk about that in the agreement, why Lakeville could move the fourth grade back to Grace if they so chose, but again, there's going to be an expense with that if you do that, you get back into the chargebacks. If you become part of a full region, then there are no chargebacks that are incurred. It becomes part of the regional budget. So moving that fourth grade back from Assawamseut would be possible without cost. If you don't regionalize, you are going to incur cost to move the fourth grade back. And if you don't, if you lower class size at Assawamseut and you don't move the fourth grade back, you're going to have a space problem. The middle school problem. That's why I told you at the beginning, let's not lose sight of this as a district, because sometimes we look at it just as pre-K for Assawamseut, this is more about a district and the challenges we face. The middle school problem, under no child left behind status, is Level 3. What that means is restructuring, they're in year two are restructuring. They haven't met their adequate yearly progress or AYP for four years in a row. Now, there are many factors why, but nevertheless, we have to address this problem. The middle school, we have to turn around, because if we don't turn that middle school around, next year they're going to, well, the year after, they'll move into Level 4, and there are more ramifications put on us by the state for that. So we really have to address the problem of the middle schools. Like I said, there are more issues than just class size, but if we don't address the class size issue, we're going to start feeding into the middle school additional problems with children not beating AYP, and again, or schools not beating AYP, and as you can see, all three schools below them now, Grace, Freetown Elementary, and Assawamseut last year did not beat AYP. So that's where the problem is feeding into the middle school, and we have to find some way to address that. Now, how does full regionalization address these problems? Again, go back to combining the three budgets into one, we'll be able to direct our resources to our greatest need. That's lowering elementary class size. Begin to address the one-grade transition at Grace. We have to change the transition problem at Grace somehow. Each increase revenue through additional funding sources such as transportation, grants, et cetera. As a full region, you will qualify for transportation reimbursement, you will have greater access to grants, you will have greater flexibility in how you spend those grants. Allow us to identify inefficiencies that will save us money, because we do a lot of things in triplication here, and basically increase our leadership capacity by not wasting the 25 to 30% of central office time that we use on the triplication of services. There are potential new revenue sources out there. Transportation reimbursement, if we were fully regionalized right now, would be about $360,000. That's plus or minus because that's a moving target by the state. They've increased that, they've lowered it over the years. Okay, right now, it's tied into your Chapter 70 numbers, so they can't lower it by any more than they're lowering Chapter 70. So that's somewhat a fixed number, but it will move a little bit. The Massachusetts School Building Authority will reimburse you for building projects at 4% greater than they'll reimburse a single district. So if Lakeville State is a single pre-K to four district and they go to renovate Assawamseut, they will be on their own, they will hopefully qualify for MSVA reimbursement, but if they're part of the region, they will get 4% greater reimbursement, that's 4% more money. And grants, combining the number of low-income students together in all of the districts, again, positions yourself in a better position to get the grants, because again, as I said, they're based on your low-income students. There are also potential cost savings through efficiencies. Special education, Director SPED has already identified $60,000 in year one of SPED savings. There is potential for more in-district programs that we could create by being a larger district, combining students together and not sending them out of district, saving some of our out-of-district special education costs. Transportation, there's potential to create less and shorter runs. Some of your children are on runs right now in excess of 45 minutes long. We have one of the most expensive transportation systems in the state because the amount of time our drivers are out on the road. This could potentially cut that cost. One cafeteria instead of three is an example, more efficient use of staff, particularly special education, et cetera. There's more to this, but again, until you actually get into the efficiencies, you don't know the actual cost, but certainly they exist. Financial implications are going to be discussed tonight, and it's going to be confusing because Chapter 70 is confusing. We had a financial analysis done by Dave Tobin. Dave Tobin is an educational consultant. Basically, what happens here is the amount of money that you are required to spend on education by the state. The amount of aid that you get by the state does not change whether you are a single district, whether you are a region. It's the same amount of money, it's the same calculation. There are other areas outside of that calculation that you have control over as a town as to whether or not you want to spend over and above, but we talked about minimum net school spending, the state tells you what that number is. So again, that's right from Dave Tobin, that's his quote, and I shared it with you because that was when he did the analysis for us, what the conclusion was, net school spending. You're going to also hear tonight about the apportioning of costs, the operating cost, and how it's done. This is the formula, this is the Chapter 70 allocation model, it's on page nine of your agreement, and basically it tells you how they calculate Chapter 70. And basically, it establishes a minimum of contribution, and that's determined by DESE, by the Commissioner essentially. It determines the total of the members' local contribution shall be subtracted from the total operating cost. That's if you're above net school spending, okay, you deduct that from the operating cost. Anything above that is portioned according to enrollment as of October 1st of the previous year. Your local contribution is added to the share of the expense operating cost to determine the annual gross assessment, that's where your assessment comes from. And number four, the member's annual gross assessment shall be reduced by its total of Chapter 70 allocation. That's the aid you get from the state. Right now, you're getting more, as Lakeville is getting more aid from the state than Freetown is getting. It's close, but why are you getting more aid for your children than Freetown's getting? Because right now, Freetown is determined to be the wealthiest town based upon property values. That's changing though. That changes over time, that's constantly a moving target, constantly changing. That's constantly a moving target, constantly changing. So you have to wait year to year to see what the assessment is going to be. What are the Chapter Seventy implications? You'll hear a lot about this tonight. The state sets the minimum the towns are required to pay. I just showed you that. Does not change as one district or three. The state's going to tell you, here's your minimum. Transportation, capital improvements, and spending above minimum are calculated and assessed on a per pupil basis. Those are outside of net school spending. And a good example of this, the last couple of years, if you've attended a town meeting in Lakeville, you've seen transportation, regional transportation cut. Regional transportation has been cut because the town could cut it. It was outside of net school spending. So they lowered the assessment. You can do that again with any of these. So the town has control of those. Capital improvements are essentially agreements already in place. You don't have a lot of control over those. But transportation and the spend, any spending above minimum are controlled by the town. Could Lakeville's costs go up? Well, that depends. As stated in the statutory method, Lakeville will pay a percentage of the cost above net school spending based on enrollment. That depends on what you want to spend above net school. Even if there is a slight increase. The added financial benefit of transportation reimbursement, cost savings, grant spending, and budget flexibility will far outweigh paying a percentage of the amount above net school spending. And again, keep going back to it. Your town controls the amount above net school spending that you want to spend. And again, Freetown would have to match that, or you would have to match Freetown because you're in a partnership with that town. Just, we have to touch on the budget because it's not good. This is, there's going to be pain no matter where you feel it. You're going to feel pain somewhere. FY-12 forecast is not good. Ultimately, we'll have a transitional school committee in place. They'll weigh in on the FY-12 budget with input from the new regional finance committee in both towns. In the end, we are going to experience pain somewhere in our budgets, K through twelve, pre-K to twelve. We're going to feel it. The question that we're going to have to ask ourselves is, are we going to try to manage it as a pre-K to four district? Or are we going to try to manage it as a pre-K to twelve district? And what's the best way to do that? Quickly, highlights of the new agreement. You'll hear some questions raised about some of these issues tonight. School committee composition meets one-man, one-vote requirement. Your current makeup of your school committee does not comply with one-man, one-vote. One-man, one-vote requires that the town with the greater population has greater representation. That's what one person, what one-man, one-vote means. Right now, Lakeville is the larger town based upon the two thousand census. And Lakeville doesn't have any greater representation on the school committee because you're three-three. There was a time, a long time, when Freetown had the larger population, but Freetown didn't have greater representation because it was three-three. You've been that way for, ever since the agreement was signed in nineteen fifty-seven. You've had this arrangement. Now, if you want to change your agreement, you're going to have to comply with one-man, one-vote. And in order to do that, there are five methods you can use to comply. The full regionalization committee that wrote this agreement, that was ultimately accepted by the regional school committee, agreed with option number three. It's the method to choose. Option number three basically keeps the equal representation of membership. Four positions from Freetown, four positions from Lakeville. Why? Because that's the way you've always been, and so they kept it that way. Secondly, the comply with one person, one vote is that members will have to run in both towns elections. So in other words, somebody running for the Freetown seat is going to have to be, get elected based upon the total of their votes for the town of Freetown and the town of Lakeville. So Lakeville will have a greater say who gets elected from Freetown because they have greater votes. That's how you comply with one person, one vote. The regional finance committee is something new that has been added to this agreement. It's something that is not in place now, and other communities have not used this, although it was strongly encouraged to be used by DDSA. They will participate in the budget process. It will consist of a selectman, a member of your finance committee, and a school committee member on that regional finance committee. Questions going to be raised about the two thousand and one Grace agreement. That remains in place. It guarantees Lakeville five hundred and fifty students at that school. We have a legal opinion from that that I received from Mike Wong, school district attorney, stating that that two thousand and one agreement will supersede any two-thirds vote that you find about moving students from one school district to another, or one town to another in the agreement. The five hundred and fifty student limit that's there in the Grace agreement of two thousand and one remains. If Lakeville needs to put five hundred and fifty students there, Lakeville can have five hundred and fifty students there based upon that agreement. The towns retain ownership of the local elementary schools, and they will lease those to the regional school district. So Assawamson remains the property of Lakeville, and Freetown Elementary remains the property of Freetown. Three schools on this property are part of the regional school district. Some of the concerns, and I've been out there for a long time, listening to concerns raised by parents, by finance committee members, by selectmen, by concerned citizens. And we've listened, the agreement has changed over time. There's concern over the financial implications. There's no question about that. There's concerns over the financial implications. Will the cost to Lakeville go up? Okay, that would be a question that people will raise tonight, is will the cost go up? And as I said, net school spending, the minimum, is controlled by the state. You have no control over that anyways, and that's how you fund your region right now. You currently fund your locals, your local, above net school spending. If you continue to fund the region at above net school spending, okay, then that's going to be added on over and above the minimum. Could there be financial implications to Lakeville? Again, I go back to one of the earliest slides. So what is the risk here? The risk is that you have a school system that you need to do something about. You need to address the problem. By spending above the minimum that your locals has not solved the problem for you right now. It's not addressed, it's a concern. Lakeville not having greater representation on the regional school committee. I just explained why the committee decided to go four-four in the agreement and how we meet the one-person, one-vote. Two-thirds vote to move students and possible impact in the two thousand and one Grace agreement. I just explained that we have a legal opinion on this, that two thousand and one agreement will supersede the two-thirds vote. Loss of local control on the pre-K four elementary schools. That's a natural thing that is a concern for people, that you have a great investment in your local elementary school. But I would just say this, you have an investment in all of your schools, in all of your children. And that should not change just because they're regional schools or they're local schools. Most of your children right now, sixty percent of them, are in a regional school. So forty percent are at local schools, sixty percent are regional schools. You have interest in your regional schools as well as your local. Impact of possible cuts at upper grades to support the lower grades. And we've heard this before, and people have asked me, what are the cuts going to be at the high school, let's say? Are we going to have to cut programs? We're going to have to cut teachers? How are we going to increase the teachers at the elementary schools without lowering the number of teachers at the high school? And without having the budget numbers, we can't give you an actual number of where the cuts are going to occur. Because some of you have middle school students, for example. You're saying, hey, my middle school student is in a class of thirty-plus as well. What are we going to do about that? Or my child's in a high school class of thirty-plus. What are we going to do about that? There are some other concerns that we have to address. There are high school classes right now that have eight children in them. And there are classes at the high school that have thirty children. There's classes at the high school where you can't fit children in anymore because they're limited because they're lab sciences. We have other issues to address besides just the class size at the locals. But I can't tell you right now what the budget cuts are going to be until we actually start looking at the budget. I can tell you that the priority needs to be lowering elementary class size and then moving down that priority list from there. And potential staff movements, which should be minimal, but there might be some, and that concerns some of our staff. I'll end with the bottom line. Does full regionalization present the best educational option for the community of Lakeville? That's the question you're going to have to ask tonight. And I'm sure a lot of people are going to weigh in on it, on whether it does or it doesn't, and how it might or might not. And if not, what alternative exists that will stop the continuation of significant cuts to the Assawamson budget that has occurred over the last two years? You've lost one point two million dollars in level service over the last two years. We face another very difficult financial challenge going forward. Whether we're fully regionalized or whether we're independent, we're going to face that challenge. We're going to face cuts. So the question tonight is whether you want to face that challenge working with your sister community of Freetown to have one budget and try to address it on your greatest priorities? Or do you want to try to go at it as you have in the past, ask reset the budgets? Okay, that's the question before you tonight. Thank you.
Before anyone moves back on to the state, I have one question, and that is of the finance committee. And if the speaker for the finance committee would stand and indicate his recommendation on this article so that I can move to the floor, who have another presentation from the opposing point of view, and we can all stay in our seats. So, finance committee. Speaker for the finance committee. Do you have a recommendation on this article, sir?
Is the finance committee voted to recommend approval by majority vote?
Thank you very much. Now, we can open it up to the floor, and I promise that the floor would start off with a PowerPoint presentation from a different point of view. Richard LaCamera?
If you recall, for those of us that were here on October eighteenth at midnight discussing full regionalization, there was three or four issues that came up that I expressed concern myself. One of them was the financial concerns about the assessments to the town having to do with regionalizing K through twelve. The other issue that was brought up was the one-man, one-vote. And the last issue that was brought up had to do with the two-thirds vote to allow us to move students from Assawamson to the intermediate school. And we'd like to address those particular issues. Since October eighteenth, there's been four or five meetings that groups of people, parents, have got together, both at Assawamson and at the library, to discuss all the concerns having to do with regionalizing K through twelve. And the message was very clear, is that the Assawamson parents are very upset about the class sizes at Assawamson. And they have expressed their concerns about how were you to add four teachers to Assawamson to address the class sizes? And I don't think there was anybody in that room that disagreed with those parents. And the issue is, what does that all mean if we regionalize K through twelve? The superintendent has made his presentation about some of the issues concerning with the financial aspects of regionalizing K through twelve. There's one thing that we definitely agree on. Fiscal twelve budget that's coming up is going to be an extremely difficult year for everybody, both of the towns and the school system. And I'm not sure that full regionalization doesn't save money to add the four teachers that the parents are demanding at Assawamson. And looking at an analysis of the current fiscal eleven budget, because we haven't been provided a budget analysis that has been requested of what the region would look like if we were regionalized K through twelve. And the analysis that I'm going to briefly talk about is really dealing with what the superintendent has been talking about, the net school spending requirements, which are numbers that we actually agree on. These numbers have been verified by the superintendent's office and the business manager. So the question is, will regionalization actually cost an additional assessment to the town of Lakeville? If you look at the slide here, and I can explain how the minimum contributions of the net school spending is calculated, but I can't do that because I bore you to death. But the important thing here is, is that if you look at Freetown and Lakeville, and then the region, you'll see that at the elementary school level, Freetown, I mean, Lakeville has fifty-nine percent of the students, and Lakeville has sixty-four point nine percent of the aid. Now, that's an important factor. And the reason why it is, is because Lakeville currently receives five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars more in aid at the local level than Freetown does, which is six hundred and sixty-seven dollars per student. That's a significant difference. The other thing, the other point is that if you look at the net school spending requirements, Freetown is spending ten thousand dollars a student, and we're spending ninety-four hundred dollars a student. And I'm going to explain what that effect has on the regional school district agreement. If we look at the regional assessment today, the region is based on that particular assessment, which is fifty-four percent. We have fifty-four percent of the students at the region. And that's our actual assessment that we are currently paying for this fiscal year. The important, can I finish my presentation, Steve? Thank you. The important thing to note there is that at the region, we're only a hundred and thirty-two thousand, a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars above the minimum contribution. At the local level in Freetown and Lakeville, we're way above the minimum contribution. So when it gets combined, I will show you the effect that it'll have on the regional school district K through twelve. Currently at the local level, the Lakeville budget, a hundred percent of the students are Lakeville. And as I said, we, our current budget for Lakeville is six million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, less the state aid, and that's the actual cost to the town of three million, nine hundred and eighty thousand. So if we combine them together, and there's probably going to be a little disagreement on this, but that's okay, because I haven't been invited to total budget to calculate what the exact cost would be for Freetown and Lakeville. But if you combine our current assessment with the local assessment, we'd be paying nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Full regionalization, this is a key thing. Superintendent actually pointed it out. That anything above the net school spending requirements, we would have to pay an additional assessment. Now, if you combine the students between K through four in both Freetown and Lakeville, and combine them with the region, then our current population is fifty-four percent. And the region, the new region, K through twelve, would be fifty-six percent. So anything above the net school spending requirements, Lakeville, of the total budget of the region combined, will be picking up an additional two percent. Now, what that means is that all of the expenses that are currently associated with the staff at Assawamson and the staff at Freetown are going to be moved to the region. And that includes health insurance, pension costs, unemployment, and so forth and so on. Now, the current regional budget without transportation and without the capital is seventeen million dollars. If you combine the costs, the cost of Assawamson and Freetown, plus all the additional costs associated with their staff, you're potentially talking about a thirty-five million dollar budget. So anything above that seventeen million dollars, that is above the net school spending requirements, Lakeville will have to pay an additional two percent assessment, which could be a big number. Once again, we agree with the superintendent, that if we do regionalize, we would get additional transportation reimbursement, and that number is three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars combined between the two towns. So, without knowing the exact numbers, once again, these are estimates. And combining, you know, all of the budgets together, you can see I just talked about the regional budget of seventeen million, and Lakeville is six-three, and Freetown is five-three. There's going to be a substantial increase in additional costs that are going to be proportioned. So, based on those numbers, once again, this is only an estimate. I estimate that the additional increase... I estimate that the additional increase in the assessment could be anywhere between $250,000 and $500,000, up and above what we're already paying. So the question we have to ask ourselves, with the very difficult budget times that we're in, the state aid that we currently receive, which is strictly used for Assawamson now, do we want to combine it with Freetown in the region and potentially have to pay another assessment at this point in time? We keep asking the question, we keep going back to the same issue. Where is the money going to come? Where is the savings going to be at the region to add the four additional teachers? Where is the savings in the administration? Where is the savings going to be, potentially? All we want to do is have the facts stated, and, you know, nothing more than that. My concern now is, right today, knowing the financial situation of the state, knowing the financial situation of the town, is this the right move right now? And that's something you've got to ask yourself. It's not that I'm for or against regionalization, I just think that everybody needs to have the correct facts and the numbers, and I think additional analysis needs to be done to verify that this makes sense with town. The other issue having to do with the one person one vote, Bob Marshall is going to discuss that particular issue.
Good evening. I have to apologize to all of you ahead of time for the necessary complicated legalese that you're about to suffer. I've been suffering with it for a couple of days, so I apologize ahead of time. And by the way, we don't present any of this information as an absolute, simply a reason for us to question some of the things we've been hearing about the justification for the 4-4 split. We've been told that the 4-4 split will satisfy the one person one vote need. I personally am very skeptical. I find it difficult also to accept the notion that someone living in one town is necessarily going to be making decisions and supporting somebody in another town. That's just me. Also, given the court, the U.S. Circuit Court decision, Kelleher versus Southeastern Vote that was decided back in 1986, I believe that speaks to a number of issues that we need to address. As I say, this was the decision that was made back in 1986. Brockton originally approved by a popular vote, much like we might take, by a more than four to one margin, the language of the Southeastern Vocational Agreement with other member towns like, I think it was East Bridgewater, and Stoughton, and Norton, and a bunch of other towns. Brockton got two members on a 10-member board, and everybody else got one each, for a total of 10. Brockton accounts for 46% of the district population, but elects only 20% of the committee's members. Now, to cut through a lot of the red tape, the court held that they reversed a lower court ruling that said it was okay to do that. The U.S. Circuit Court reversed it, and in it they said, "The majority of voters cannot waive the constitutional right of a minority to an undiluted voting system." So that was one con. Even though Brockton originally approved their agreement wording that included the imbalance of representation by a vote in excess of four to one, the U.S. Court of Appeals, First Circuit, stated that this argument has a certain superficial appeal, but is not persuasive. They went on to say that the majority of voters approved the apportionment scheme, that they approved it is irrelevant, and that an individual's constitutionally protected right to cast an equally weighted vote cannot be denied, even by a vote of a majority of a state's electorate. I read that to mean that even the whole state, if they voted to eliminate an individual's rights, that it would not be legal. They went on to say that the fact that an apportionment plan is adopted by a popular referendum of vote is insufficient to sustain its constitutionality. So one of the questions that I have had all along, and I have here tonight, I put forward to counsel in the room, and by the way, I don't know how you go home at night and don't have your head hurt when you read all this stuff every day, because mine certainly has. "It's insufficient to sustain its constitutionality or induce support to refuse to act." I read that to mean that just because it was voted by a majority of the city, it's not enough to overturn an individual's rights. In an earlier 1943 decision, I know that seems like, oh gosh, that was way back then, but that's the way courts are, one decision depends on another, et cetera, et cetera. The same court held, "One's right to life, liberty, and property, and other fundamental rights may not be submitted to vote. A citizen's constitutional rights can hardly be infringed because a majority of the people choose it to be." Not my words, their words. They went on to say, "A majority of the citizens willing to have their rights diluted," in other words, if you said it was okay, "cannot deprive the minority of their right to cast an equally weighted vote." You can't give up that one man one vote principle. I won't read through all of this, but basically they went on to say that the way Brockton and all the other towns set this thing up, which I'm assuming they had legal opinions about at the time, violates the one person one vote principle, and it deprives voters of the constitutional right to cast an equally weighted vote, one person one vote. Again, I'm repeating here that they reversed the decision. Now, let's assume that the language did meet the one person one vote need. Even if that were true, if all of the above that we stated wasn't true, and our electing the members of the regional school committee did satisfy the equal protection clause, even if that were so, why would we accept it? It doesn't make sense to me that we, as a town, would give up our legal rights. Why would we accept less representation than we're legally and rightfully entitled to? And for that reason, I think it's a bad deal for the kids, and the voters, and the taxpayers, and for that reason, we urge you to reject this proposal. Thank you.
Dave Davington, the school committee, will address the two thirds issue having to do with grace.
Good evening, Dave Davington. I've been asked to talk a little bit about the grace amendment and the two third vote requirement. My job's been made a little bit easier, and my presentation will be shorter because of information that's been flowing in as late as today. But I guess I wanted to change course a little bit and just mention that this didn't originate within our group, it isn't something that necessarily came up on our own. If anybody knows the expression, "What happens in Vegas stays in Vegas," it's kind of a version of that. About three weeks ago, Freetown had its town meeting, which I attended. And in that meeting, Freetown's selectman spoke to a protection that she had gained for Freetown in the negotiations during the subcommittee process, and that was that the two third vote would protect Freetown from Lakeville unilaterally deciding how to use grace. Didn't sound right. So that made a little bit of a commotion when it came back to Lakeville, and it wasn't just to me, there were several people that got interested in that. And had that been true, this agreement would have lost a lot of support on the people that are sitting in this front row. There's been several legal opinions, as John had mentioned, and they seem to be pretty consistent, that Lakeville will retain its two third vote. It's a little bothersome that a mistake like that had to happen, we, Freetown's talking about the same agreement as we are, and that that person claimed to have knowledge, understanding, and in fact crafted the protection. It's a, it's a mistake that had perfect timing, it would seem. It seemed to play to that audience there. It's a little bothersome. It's not directly germane to our discussion, but it has its role. So as far as the agreement tonight, the one thing that seems a little bit unclear to me that would be good to be clarified is not so much whether or not the protection exists, but it appears that when the agreement was created, there was a school committee in place, there is one as of right now, and that questions of using that amendment and using grace would naturally originate within the Lakeville School Committee, and then be presented out to the region or whatnot. That committee under this proposal is going to disappear, it's not going to exist anymore. And in the space of a week, I've heard both the superintendent and the selectmen in Lakeville both claim that they would be able to make that decision. So there seems to be a little remaining confusion with the disappearance of the local committee, just how that agreement operates anymore. I think we're assured that it's still in place, which is good, but we do need some clarification on just how it stays in place. And that's it for me.
Thank you. This terminates the presentations. If we could have the people come back up on the stage? Well, you mean you want them jumping around from frame to frame? We may have to come back to a frame, so don't delete anything, okay? But hold on, because there are other people who want to speak as well. Just timeout for a second, please. Which slide would you like, Mr.? Could Mr. LaCamera load the slides where Mr. Olivier would like to have a question? I think it was at that point where he said, "Let me finish."
It's on slide three.
Slide three. And if we dull the lights so we could see it?
You're going to have to give us a couple of minutes to let it cool down, and then we can turn it back on.
All right, why don't, Steve, why don't you give it five minutes, and we'll get to some other questions and come back to you? It's something to do with an $80 bulb, and we don't want to blow it. Just one moment, she was there. Please identify yourself.
Hi, Amy Dow, One Nelson's Grove Road. I understand that they may have questions on the presentation. I just want to ask through you, to the regional school committee, the local school committee, and the board of selectmen, and the finance committee, why do you support full regionalization? So if I could get an answer from, you know, the chairperson of each of those four committees, why they support it?
Okay, fine. Despite what was on the screen, I think they want to know individually why each of those individuals supports it. While we're waiting for everything back there to cool, we might as well do that. Please identify yourself.
Rain Carbone.
Can we have the speakers on, please? The microphones are dying down here. Try it again. No, no, we hit for live.
Rain Carbone, Regional School Committee. Thank you for the opportunity, Amy. I've been part of the school committee for a number of years now, and I've been through numerous budget cycles, some where the town has had additional funding that was available, that they contributed to the schools, right down to where we've had to make some drastic cuts. I've been involved with the educational element, with new programs that we've implemented through curriculum design. Up until this last year, the cuts that we've made, and the direction I think that we've tried to make as a community to balance our budgets, have not sat well with me as a school committee member. Sitting on the region, yes, you know, our budget is large, and the local budget is much smaller. And having made those cuts and trying to balance those budgets, I know that the community has looked to the region to try to support some of the deficit at the local. And to take money from the region to pay for the local, you know, it's a hard position for me because of all of our students. We all need to support our students. So when we do take money from the region, we are putting the region in a position of where we have to make some adjustments. At the local level, we've had to make those adjustments also. I know, this is a very passionate subject for me. I support full regionalization because the priorities that we have to address through the local can be made through full regionalization. I know I'm probably confusing the issue, I apologize about that, but I do support it. We put a lot of work into this agreement, we did not take it lightly. Each of these topics within the agreement, we put a lot of time in them. I'm hoping that we can address any of these questions that you might have, but yes, I do support full regionalization.
Who else would you want?
Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and the local.
Well, the Finance Committee's already spoken, but...
I just didn't know why, why they...
Okay. Let's start with Nancy for the selectmen.
Just answering her questions is on? Okay, just answering her question. We have a new superintendent of schools, we have a whole new...
Could you please put this on back there?
I'll pick that.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, that's better. I can leave it out here, I might talk loud. We have a new administration. In the past, we've had a lot of trouble, there's been a lot of distrust with, between schools and the board of selectmen. I personally have experienced that. We have a new administration, they're professional educators, and they're advising us this is the best educational path for our children. We're not going to be looking to see a lot of extra money. I find that the superintendent is already finding ways to educate the children better. I feel we need to give him the tools to do that. He's doing it already. So I think trust has to start somewhere, and I am trusting in our educational leaders who are advising us this is the best thing to do for our children, money aside. All I heard out of that second slideshow was the money, the money, the money. We are the children. We need to provide the best education we can with what we have for our children.
Thank you, the Finance Committee.
Hi, Amy. I'm Melissa Hopkins. Nancy, you took the words right out of my mouth, I'm serving on the Subcommittee for Regionalization for a year and a half. Working with John McCarthy and the current school committee, I just experienced such a feeling of trust in John and the regional school committee to do the right thing for our children. And what has been difficult for me, and was being a parent, I am a parent of a sixth grader, and I really needed to put that aside and look at the financial aspects to what you think of John. So I can't really say anything more than what John has said. So I can't really say anything more than what John has said and what Nancy has said, and we are in full agreement of the majority that we're supporting full regionalization. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I'm just one question on the majority. Is there anyone on the Finance Committee that was against it?
Yes, there was. That's why they said a majority. Do you wish to speak to each member of the Finance Committee individually?
Well, I just would like to hear both sides if there's, you know, the board of selectmen or...
Mr. O'Or, would you like to present a point of view?
Sure. Norman O'Or, for the Finance Committee. I've looked critically at the whole issue we're here to vote upon for the second time, at least since last winter, when I started getting involved in my position before I was even looking to take on the Finance Committee. The first thing, the first presentation I went to, looked at the two budgets and basically molded the two budgets, took all the money being spent at each town, added them together and said, "Here's going to be your new region budget." My question was, "Does it save money?" The answer was, "No, it doesn't save money." However, it will provide better education for the same. Okay, that's being stated. It's still being stated. However, throughout the whole effort, and I believe Nancy spoke to it first, there have been issues between the region and the separate towns. There have been issues that have been hard to work through. So right off the bat, I'm a little skeptical, and as Nancy said. Now, so my first issue that I've had from the beginning was working together with Freetown and the Trust, and really working with the region also, because they're going to operate as their own town. We're going to have three towns, more or less, to deal with our own budget issues. The Trust issue, I think Mr. Davenport spoke to. Through this process, I have not been impressed with the new Trust, with being able to give over that trust to a full region. I use the example, the one that Mr. Davenport used. We've asked questions throughout this process. We're trying to do this work so that you can come here tonight and hear from your representatives. Then you make the decision. You also do your homework, but I understand that it takes a lot of time. You put us here so that we can try to do a lot of the work and make recommendations. When the town of Freetown goes to their information meetings, not just their town meeting, but leading up to their information meeting, and points to the fact that it's going to take a two-thirds vote, and if there's four and four equal on the committee, that means if all of Freetown is against it, it's not happening. And that it's going to take all, it's going to take some of Freetown's members in order to allow Lakeville to send students to GRAZE. That was stated in information meetings that the superintendent put on, that was stated at their town meeting. There was no rebuttal. There was no correction. It was just left to hang. Was that the understanding at the time? We all took it to be the understanding at the time. That's why it became an issue in the last few weeks here in Lakeville. Now, suddenly, legal council says, "No, that's not true. You can send students to GRAZE at any time." My question still has been, "How does that happen?" Because some board has to determine that if we want to lower class sizes, we want to move students to GRAZE. Someone has to make that decision. And again, if it goes to the new board, four and four, and Freetown decides, "Well, we don't want that to happen," where are we at? I've been told tonight, several, over the last week, I've been told the superintendent can make that decision on his own. I've been told that the board of selectmen now, tonight, can make that decision. What are the answers? That speaks to the Trust. So going into it, I didn't have trust. The process that's happened, I still don't have the trust. Also a part of the Trust, we've asked for financial numbers just for the simple breakdown. The attempt that was made tonight in the second presentation, and I know we don't want to look at finances, we do, but, you know, in addition to the educational benefits, but that was asked for. That sort of a presentation has been asked for, and it took outside, it took citizens to make an attempt at looking at, "What is the financial burden?" And I haven't heard one person refute that it's not going to, given this year's numbers, increase. Now, I know Steve's going to talk to that group a bit.
Which is sum up now?
Okay.
Thank you.
Second and third reasons. The one man, one vote. I've been against that all along. I think that people should run in Lakeville for Lakeville offices, or in Freetown for Freetown offices. I understand that if we went to a majority vote for a larger town, it could switch. Freetown could certainly get that right. But isn't that just a basic right that we understand? Thirdly, educationally. So far, I've seen a focus on administrators. Even though there will be a reduction in the work that the administrators will have to do, the intent is, rather than get rid of an administrator and put teachers in the classes, the intent, I believe, what I've been told by the superintendent, is that they'll keep those administrators and they'll be able to work more on, I guess, supporting the teachers. So I'm not convinced that educationally is the best thing to do.
Thank you. Because if we start going both sides and clapping on both sides, it's going to get eerie here. We don't want to do that. I think he's answered all of your questions.
He did. I just looked at the local, the local school committee. Why? I think it's important that the local...
All right, the local school committee, you know, a lot of people want to talk.
The local school committee is here. I'm Aaron Burke. I am the local school committee chairperson. I think, first, I'd like to thank Rich LeCamer for elevating the discussion of this, because I think that this is a positive discussion that needs to take place when we're involved in a decision that's of this caliber. One thing that nobody's highlighted that I'd like to point out, and I'm only speaking for myself, I can't speak for the committee. We took a vote on this, and we were in support of full regionalization as a local school committee from a majority vote. But me personally, why I support full regionalization is among what, in addition to what John McCarthy pointed out, this is an opportunity to streamline government on a local level. It's an opportunity to get rid of a couple of school committees and ideally have one school committee functioning in a new paradigm to hopefully provide educational services more efficiently. Yes, there are a lot of unanswered questions related to the finances. But with that said, it's certainly an opportunity to get in, dig in, examine what the administration's doing, and try to focus on the goal of getting those class sizes down and getting a better quality education for hopefully the same money, hopefully not more money. Again, a lot of that is state-controlled. But that's why, that's why I'm for it. This is a chance to streamline things and correct a problem that has been in existence since 1957. Thank you.
Thank you.
There was a question asked, I think, of all of the committee members, and I'm not sure if it got answered at all. And so I'm going to ask it as a general question to any of the people who did the speaking. And that is, if the local school committee disappears, who is going to be able to send the students to the middle school, to the 550, if there's no one in Lakeville to vote? That was asked three separate times, and it wasn't answered. Would someone care to answer that one? Town council, perhaps?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the meeting, I think this might be a good time to talk about this, the issue of the GRAZE enrollment and 550 students and the two-thirds vote, if Mr. Moderator will allow me to address that issue. Thank you. I know that a lot has been discussed about what happened in Freetown and the discussion on that, and whether there's been proper information regarding the ability of the town of Lakeville to continue to send its students to GRAZE, and whether that's going to require a two-thirds vote, and whether that two-thirds vote would now be essentially an impossibility, leaving the town of Lakeville unable to achieve its goal of sending its students unhindered, unencumbered by the protections guaranteed in this agreement to GRAZE. And just to clarify that, I think it's important to look at what we talked about, and I know we already heard the comment made that, you know, the legal terms are very boring and it's not a lot of fun to talk illegalies. So I'm going to try to make it as plain as possible. When we read agreements, we try to read them as a whole. We try to give all portions of an agreement, a statute, a bylaw, proper meaning, a plain meaning. We try to read it in a way that gives a plain meaning right from the beginning. And what you need to remember is that in your original agreement, you've had provisions that had to do with the incurring of debt for the construction of the building, and there's language specifically in that agreement that talks to the 550 pupils coming from Lakeville to go to GRAZE, then known as RAMS, and for the 200 pupils to come from Freetown. And obviously, that was intended, looking forward to Freetown sending its pupils to that school. That provision is not disturbed in this agreement. This agreement does have a protection in terms of two-thirds vote, but that protection comes in after the implications of this provision, which retains to the town of Lakeville a baseline of 550 students. That is a precondition based upon the incurring of debt. The debt has been incurred, so that precondition springs. And what is required to spring it was the incurring of the debt. Otherwise, we have to look back at the basis for the debt, and we would be going down a road that certainly we can't go down because we can't undo the debt and unbuilt the school. We look to give this provision plain meaning. This provision itself is referenced and incorporated into your new agreement. So the new agreement recognizes what was an agreement made, essentially a compromise to preserve the rights of Lakeville and anticipate the rights of Freetown, and set certain baselines. And so the 550 students remain with the town of Lakeville. The issue of who's going to make that decision, there's language in the current agreement that talks about, in the case of vacancies, you have appointments by the board of selectmen. So if you have no local committee, you're going to be looking to your board of selectmen who retain, retain control until the committee is appointed, elected, I should say, I'm sorry. And at that point, obviously, you're going to have representatives from Lakeville who will look to fill those 550 slots. But those are slots allocated to Freetown. They will not be decided by two-thirds vote, giving Freetown a veto over Lakeville, just like ultimately, Freetown will have those 200 slots, more or less, allocated to them under Exhibit 1 agreement. But those are baseline numbers. They don't go away. They remain protected, and they carry over from the prior agreement incorporated in whole in the new agreement. A plain reading means that you've got those 550 pupil seats waiting for you to be decided by Lakeville, not subject to a two-thirds vote under the new agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Markson, you have a quick question.
Very great question for an Boston council. Has the town of Lakeville had in its possession a written memorandum stating what you just stated?
Go ahead, town president. Mr. Moderator, that would be the agreement that you're voting on tonight.
No, a written memorandum of the opinion of law that you just stated, that you just enunciated.
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, it's interesting, because this question was asked of us today, but an opinion did come in, an email opinion came in, electronic mail opinion came in from the district council, independent of my own review of this agreement. We've had, we've been reviewing this agreement for quite some time, and certainly, we can put together a vast, a written agreement, one already, a written opinion, I'm sorry, a written opinion, a legal opinion already exists from the district council. We concur with that opinion.
Okay, and this is in writing and is in possession of the board of selectmen?
I'm holding it in my hand right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Olivier, would you put the projector on to frame three, as Steve has asked, and take it from there, Steve?
I just want to make a point of clarification here. If you look at the bottom where it's shaded blue, where it mentioned, and it shows a percentage of 54.3, this is what LeCamer had mentioned, and that represents the student population at the region this year, but it's actually not the student population of the region. The student population representing Lakeville at the region is 58 percent. That number happens, which ends up being the 5,717,097, or 10.5 million times, 54 percent, happens to be the amount of minimum local contribution that the state has set for the town of Lakeville. Our population is 58 percent, but the state has said, "You're going to have to contribute 54 percent." So that goes along with what Mr. McCarthy had said, that Lakeville gets more money at the region. So by moving the elementary school to the region, there's no reason to indicate that that's going to change. Now, what Rich was talking about, if we spend any money over the net school spending, and like, to tell you, we currently have the net school spending at the Assolet School, that would be a portion based off of the student population, as well as the additional transportation money that we're going to get. But I also want to read a letter to you, because this presentation was received by the board of selectmen and the school superintendent, and John had a good sense to forward it to Chris Lynch, who's the school governance, mass department of education, as well as her reviewing this presentation, Roger Hatch of Department of Education reviewed it as well. And he wrote an email to John, I want to read that to you. It says, "John, Roger Hatch and I have viewed the calculations outlined on the presentation that you provided to us. There was a critical flaw in the calculations as presented. This presentation compares each town's current required spending as calculated based on the wealth-based formula to a simulated requirement calculated on an enrollment-based formula. This calculation is not comparable with state law, nor with the methodology outlined in the proposed K-12 regional agreement, and does not present an accurate comparison." So I just want you to keep that in mind. I was going to talk about the GRAZE as well. As John mentioned, town council did a good job of explaining that, but what we need to keep in mind is that when we moved, and John had mentioned this, when we moved the students back to Lakeville through the 20% budget cut, there's a $500,000 savings there. If we pass this agreement tonight, Lakeville has the power to move the fourth grade next school year into the GRAZE school without incurring any additional chargeback costs, which John elaborated earlier. So that's a savings to the town of Lakeville for about $500,000. Yeah, the region would have to figure out where it would come from, but it's all part of the efficiency studies and all the work that he's going to try to figure out how to do that. But there would be no further chargebacks to the town of Lakeville, and it would satisfy or it would help alleviate the issue where the fourth graders are transitioning to GRAZE and then one year later transitioning to the middle school. And you can see that in the numbers of the special ed, that that's a problem. It's pretty obvious with that 22 percent. So we, right off the bat, can address the issue of that transition part to the town of Lakeville before anything happens at the regional school committee. Because I know we have plans to do a K-5 program between three towns, but as far as Lakeville students are concerned, we can address that problem by way and help alleviate some of the issues at the middle school.
Thank you. Sir, Mr. McLean?
Yes. I wish to speak in favor of this agreement, and I'd like to have the lights so I can read my notes. If it's my turn, I'd like to take my turn. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Dave McQueen, Dunbar Road, a member of the Lakeville. It's been my privilege to be a member of your school committee for the last four and a half years, and I've given this situation a great deal of thought, and I want to share some of those thoughts with you tonight. I'm going to give you my top 10 reasons for full regionalization. If you'll bear with me, it'll go very quickly. First, number 10. That's probably an error there. Let's say number 10. End the overuse of the word "regionalization." I'm tired of it, for one. Nine, and we can all agree on this, fewer elected officials. You know that has to be good. We go from currently electing seven school committee members to four. What a deal. Number eight, create the opportunity for school committee candidates to campaign in both Freetown and Lakeville. I love it. For over 50 years, we've been partners in education, and campaigning in both communities can help bring us together as full partners in education pre-K through 12. Number seven, create the regional finance... Number seven, create the regional finance subcommittee as a permanent advisory group with members from both town select boards and finance committees. I think this is great. Help keep the regional school committee, as has been pointed out here tonight, is a separate town. Help that committee stay closely connected with both towns' leadership. This has to be good for education. Number six, allow greater efficiencies of operations, purchasing of necessary goods and services, just one example. Maybe the possible more efficient bus runs, special education savings have already been identified, one school district versus three. Five, our superintendent and his staff can become more concerned with education and less concerned with three school committee meetings a month and managing three school districts with the resultant triplication of efforts. Talk of a waste. What a waste of time. Four, more state financial support without changing the minimum spending requirements of the towns. I know, having talked with Ectov and Heryr Colley tonight, Mr. McCarthy, and in working through the numbers, it's very clear, and I'm glad to see Mr. McCramer also agrees, that the requirements, the net school spending, the minimum spending of both towns does a change. So that's really the bottom line. You know, the state, through a foundation budget, sets the foundation budget for the education of our children. It's independent of the school district. It's only a function of the children, and how much we pay is a function of the wealth of the communities. Some of the discussion tonight about money has been concerned about the Chapter 70 formula. We can't do anything about that. That's determined by the state. All you need to know is that the net school spending, minimum requirement that we need to spend on these schools doesn't change whether it's one school district or three. Over half the cost of busing for elementary students would be reimbursed by the state, while today, Lakeville pays for all of it. This is real money. And again, Mr. McCramer agrees with that. $369,000 between the two towns. That's huge. Three, better enable our schools to weather this unanswered crisis. One pre-K through 12 school district would allow any cuts to be managed more efficiently. The worst is likely to be next year, as you want federal programs, several federal programs expire. Michael Widmer of the Massachusetts Tech Program Foundation says to plan for a 10% cut in local state aid for FY12. I hope for something better. And I can tell you right now, being very familiar with Assawamse's budget, if we don't fully regionalize, there's no place to cut. You can't cut 5% out of Assawamse right now without cutting teachers. Two, our beautiful intermediate school, Grays, would finally become more fully utilized. Next September, if we pass this tonight, I can guarantee you, our fourth graders will certainly move there, thus reducing the overcrowding in Assawamse. I think there's a little confusion about what happens if you vote yes tonight. The local school committees don't go away. The regional school committee doesn't go away. This agreement doesn't take effect till 1 July next year. The local school committees will remain in operation, as well as the region, until 30 June. There will be a transition committee, but that's composed of all the school committee members. So Lakeville, in due time, in the spring, will vote to move the fourth grade there. It's a certainty. Back to Grays. With one school district, the financial wall between school districts, which prevents the fourth grade being at Grays today disappears. There's no wall anymore. Sending our fourth graders a few years ago to Grays was sending them to another school district. It's like sending them to Taunton or sending them to any other town around here. It's another school district. There's a financial wall between school districts that goes away. And number one, lower class sizes, where it's most important in our elementary schools, low 20s versus the 30 or more for the past two years. Today, I'm sorry to tell you, that there is a second grade classroom in Assawamse with 30 students. There are two fourth grade classrooms with 30 and 31 students respectively. A second grade classroom with 30 students. There are five additional classrooms for 2 through 5 with 29 students. Lowering class sizes in elementary schools. The foundation for education system, elementary schools, obviously eventually helps the entire school system. While the foundation is crumbling, you heard, the unsurprising fact is that Assawamse failed to make AYP in the latest M-PAS tests, showing that, not that Assawamse failed, that we failed. We failed to adequately support our elementary school students. There was a little saying I'm fond of, and I want to share with you. Yesterday is history. Tomorrow is a mystery. Today is a gift. That's why we call it the present. And I ask you to take this present, this gift, this moment in time, to give a gift to the students of Lakeville, present and future, the gift of a better education. Vote yes on this former article. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy, then you, then Derek, then Richard.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to ask Town Council to address the power, the one man, one vote, and the legality of that as we were compared to Brockton.
Okay. Town Council?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's good to meet you. Again, I take heart in the comment made that we shouldn't spend a lot of time delving into the legal leaves. I think, quite simply, when you read cases and you look at how those cases translate to the circumstances you're dealing with, you have to look at the facts of the case. And unfortunately, in the presentation that we received, we looked at nuggets, what we call dicta or rhetoric from the case, but we didn't actually look at the facts of the case. And the facts there, other than a brief reference to the issue of apportionment, didn't get into the fact that the Brockton situation was quite different from what we were looking at in the Freetown-Lakeville agreement. And the way the agreement is presented to you tonight specifically preserves the concept of one person, one vote, in that it looks at Freetown-Lakeville as a district. And looking at it as a district, it provides for voting across the district, so that everyone in the district votes on every one of the members of the school committee. Now, yes, you'll have two from Freetown, two from Lakeville, but they will have to obtain their votes from across the district. So you're looking at the district as a whole. And the basis for that process is found in state law, General Law Chapter 71, Section 14E, which provides for five different mechanisms by which the election process can be established for a regional school district. And it looks like Brockton ran afoul of option number one, which allows for electing school committee members by voters in member communities, with each community's representation apportioned according to population. And as we saw in that presentation, it looks like that district did not stack up properly in terms of apportionment. What's different in Freetown-Lakeville is that the agreement looks to option number three, which specifies electing members with residency requirements in district-wide elections to be held at the biennial state elections. So we're looking at specifically a provision allowed under state law. If you know, the Brockton case did not seek to strike down state law. It sought to deal with a particular circumstance in which the apportionment did not achieve parity with population. In the Freetown-Lakeville situation, one person, one vote is guaranteed by establishing elections across the district. So every voter in Freetown, every voter in Lakeville has an equal say ultimately in electing the four positions, understanding that two will come from residency in Lakeville, two with residency in Freetown, but they will be voted across the district. You're creating a district, district-wide elections specifically allowed under state law. It would be very interesting if somebody seeks to challenge state law itself, but that's what we rely upon, that has gone through the legislature, has gone through the Attorney General's office, and that establishes state law and the basis for the process that you are engaging in. There's a secondary process allowed as an option, which allows the town to seek special legislation to avoid having to put this question of election on a statewide ballot and instead have it put on a local ballot with other provisions. Right now, the way the agreement is crafted, it is in compliance with General Law's Chapter 71, Section 14E, and provides, and I saw the comment about the spirit of one person, one vote. It's more than the spirit of one person, one vote. It's in compliance with the law that provides for one person, one vote across the district.
Thank you, Town Council. Yes, sir?
Yeah, January 30th, I would you drive. This is probably legal counsel directing this question. As I've heard tonight, the boards are for this article and their information that they've gotten from this whole system. Now, on the previous special meeting that we had on this article, when the meeting was first held, a motion was made to bring this article up first. It was defeated. They didn't want the article to be read then. Then at the end of the special election meeting, because it was late, another motion was made not to have this article voted on. It was defeated. It was sent to vote on the article. That's what, less than a month ago? Now, I also heard that it was up to the vote. So what I'm saying is, a vote was taken on this article, and it was defeated. Now, having said this between these, now, the selectmen, the reason given was because a petition was brought up. I'm saying if there was a reverse, if that vote was different, and another petition was made, I don't think they would have allowed this to be held again. I think that the vote that was taken, and I think there was as many people in that vote, and there was twice here, because it didn't vote, we had people that might have left, but that's wasn't the legal thing, and that we did vote on it, and I've heard it's a democratic society, but here we are again with the same article. I don't think there's anything new, because I pretend it all.
Excuse me, do you have a question?
Right, is this legal?
Okay, fine. Town Council, would you answer the question? I believe it's not the same agreement as we had last town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you to the meeting. I think you were getting into some interesting points of parliamentary procedure and town meeting procedure, and whether a matter can be brought forward. But you need to remember that the school district agreement actually has within it a process for amending the agreement, which requires the amendment to be brought forward by the school committee. The agreement that we're looking at tonight is in fact different, amendment, I should say, is in fact different from what was voted on on October 18. And in fact, my discussion just prior to this discussion regarding the one person, one vote is illustrative of the change between October 18 and this agreement. After the defeat on October 18, prior to Freetown's finalization of their own special town meeting warrant, the school committee met again and brought forward a recommendation to be brought before town meeting, a revised version of the amendment. And it went through the process as mandated under the agreement and came forward again. So in fact, we're looking at a different document. So yes, I agree, we live in a democratic society, and that's why we have this before us again. It went through the appropriate process, consideration tonight is certainly is legal.
I myself had a question because, sir, I myself had a question because if it had been the identical article, we would have had to reconsider it. But we're not reconsidering it because it's not the same one.
But the regionalization was voted on. If it is voted yes tonight, it's still a regionalization, isn't it?
Not the same article, and that's why.
It's not the same article, but it is.
You want to call the umbrella the umbrella. We have a different painted umbrella.
I'm saying, it either is or isn't a regionalization.
If I may, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, please.
Just to make the point, we're not voting on regionalization today. We're voting on amendment to a regional school district agreement. You already have regionalization. You're voting to amend that.
We have full regionalization.
Well, you're voting to amend that, to expand the concept of regionalization. You already have that. And now, you're voting on a new agreement. So you're not looking, you're not trying to undo what was done back in October. Maybe if it makes you feel better, it's a second bite at the apple, but it's a different bite. It's a different agreement. You're not voting simply on regionalization. You're voting on this.
I think that we can only do what we can do, sir. Okay? Derek?
Mr. Moderator, hello, everyone. Thank you all for coming. I just wanted to clarify, I was on the subcommittee for the good old 18 months of this went on, and one of the concerns both towns had, and I'm not here to defend Freetown Selectmen, but it's been a concern on this two-thirds vote. And the reason that this came up was, there was some talk about what if Freetown wanted, what if this regional school committee wanted to move Freetown students to Lakeville or Lakeville students to Freetown? How would that be controlled? And our concerns, both towns were concerned, were we didn't want it to be where just a simple majority decided on where Lakeville students would go at the Assawamse or where Freetown's elementary students would go. We thought it really needed to be taken real serious, because we knew how emotional those schools are to each town, and how the elementary school is a part of the town, and it means so much to each town. So that was the only reason that two-thirds vote came up. It had nothing to do with Grays whatsoever. It just wanted to make sure that we thought long and hard before we moved any students from their local community, elementary school to another town, and that's really where that came from. So, Ms. Davenport, I apologize if you misunderstood what the selectmen of Freetown was saying, but that was her intent. I was on the committee with 18 months without that.
Thank you, Mr. Maxson. Mr. McCramer?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to address Steve's question about the 54% on the state aid calculation at the region. I have the assessment sheet from this year's budget, and we just took the numbers that were on the sheet as how the allocation of the state aid was allocated. And it's exactly what was in the presentation that I presented to the town. Since you brought up the email from Christine Lynch from Department of Education, I was copied on that email today at 4:11 PM today. At 10 minutes of 5, I was on the phone with Christine Lynch of the Department of Education. This is what I'm concerned about, is that all of these items should have been discussed, the information should have been presented, you know, to the town and to all the people that were interested in the financial information. 10 minutes of 5 today, we're still discussing what the numbers are and what the correct calculations were. And my point was, not necessarily the calculation is perfect, but the calculation assessment, the assessment is going to go up based upon the percentage of the students once above the net school spending. That's a fact, and Christine Lynch from the Department of Education confirmed that today.
Thank you, Mr. McCramer. Sir?
Yes, John Podley from Oklahoma Street. One of the things I expected tonight was a, if the superintendent showed us slides that Marion had 21 students per class, and Lakeville's Assawamse had 31 students per class, I expected to understand the timeline as to how we get to the 20. I would expect how many teachers we need to hire, and I would expect where that money comes from. That is, if in fact, the paperwork is done in triplicate, I would think those people were going to be terminated. But a minute ago, or a few minutes ago, I heard that we're going to keep those people and focus on important education matters. Well, I think mathematically, the only way to come from 30 to 21 is to add teachers and add money, or transfer people from the regional school. I would have expected someone to say, "I'm going to transfer six teachers to Assawamse to solve the old problem situation." I heard none of that. I heard, "Let's regionalize, then let's work on how we're going to do that." I thought the proposal would have been in front of us first with the budget. If we talked about trust, if you went to a board of directors meeting, you'd say, "Here's my proposal. Here's the old budget. Here's the new budget. Here's how I'm going to fund these six students." Now, we're out for the education of the students going from 30 to 21. I heard no one say how we're going to do that, other than we're going to work on that. So I'm very surprised at that. Without that, I would vote it down. And I'm the first one that wants to go to 20 students per class. But without understanding how we get there, I would certainly not support it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy, I think you have to give an answer here.
Answer?
Answer? When we did the original proposal and we presented a budget to the communities, we looked at the possibility of putting back four teachers in each elementary school. Three regular classroom teachers and one specialist teacher that would need to be put in place. So there would be a total of four put back in place in each classroom. That's a total of eight. And we presented a scenario of how we could accomplish that. We could do it through a reduction or transfer of positions from what is currently the region five through twelve. And as I pointed out, likely the high school because that's where we have our lowest class sizes and can afford actually to have the higher class sizes educationally. Transferring two of those positions. And then paying for the other six positions with the Education Jobs Fund as well as Excess and Deficiency Fund that exists at the region. The region received in Education Jobs Fund, four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. We spent a little over half of that. So we have that allocated for next year. That's in reserves. If we fully regionalize, we will be able to direct that money to the greatest need, which is putting teachers in the elementary classrooms. If we don't fully regionalize and we stay five through twelve, we will direct that money to placing positions five through twelve. So the plan was initially to put four teachers in each elementary school. That only gets you halfway there. You were at those class sizes that I just showed you two years ago. What's happened in those two years is you've absorbed one point two million dollars in level service cuts. That's why you're in the position you're in right now. You are not going to get back there in one year. You may not get back there in two years. It may take you three to five years to build this back to where you can get into the position where you're looking at class sizes of twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. That's where you should be. You're not going to get back there all at once. And furthermore, and we all stated this tonight, that the current economic climate for FY twelve is very troubling right now. Very troubling. And so what's going to happen is, and there's a potential that to reach those four positions in each elementary school may not even happen in the first year. I would love to see that happen, but I can't stand up here and promise you that that will happen. That's a goal. Put those teachers in elementary classes, lower the class size. And that's going to be the goal of the regional school committee. And that's what we're all working towards. How many years, timeline? It may take you to get back to where you were. It may take you beyond two to three years to get back there and get through these financial times.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Sir?
Hi, Derek Davenport, Lakeville School Committee. I wanted to take a moment and talk a little bit about some more of the... I spoke earlier, but that was just specific to the presentation. And first, I kind of want to dispel a notion that might be going around for people who have opposing viewpoints like myself. I'm a little nervous. I don't belong to any pro-high class size and crumbling school club and I don't think one exists. That's not the point here. We're all here for the same reason. We just differ on how we want to get there. There is not a disagreement on the need for lower class sizes and the like. I've been here for four and a half, four, four and a half years. I've enjoyed my stay here. I'm a fairly new resident. This is a heartbreaker tonight. You know, either side is going to have its problems coming out of this. I realize that.
Could you get to the point, please?
My apologies. We have to look at how this is going to work, okay? Saying that it's the best thing for the children, I understand, I get that. But right behind that is, how do we get there? And John just said it. I've been asking for the longest time as a school committee member and as a resident, do we get the four teachers? Do we get the lower class sizes? We just heard that it may be a four to five-year process. Maybe, I'm not holding John to that, but... When those questions are asked, the answers start to change. The presentations have been all to the benefit. And truth, Rich McCamara shouldn't have had to do all of this research basically on his own. People have been sent out to be committees of one on some of this information. Ward was told once in the meeting, "Why don't you go and be a committee of one?" When he asked a question of one of the committees. And that goes to the trust issue. Specifically, I have a problem right now watching the elementary school marry into the region because I don't think the region is financially in very good shape and some of the promises that are in this concept. Yes, we're voting on the amendment, but the concept are the things that grow out of it. Last year, the region had an opportunity to make a small gesture to our school that would have added back a couple of teachers. In the end, it got pulled because the board of selectmen took some transportation money. The purpose of the money that was going to go to the schools, which was called the bridge plan, was to add teachers. It was to be a good thing. The purpose of the money that was taken out of transportation was to just try and maintain a level playing field. There were two different purposes, but when the board of selectmen did this in Lakeville, and by the way, Freetown didn't have a problem with that because they followed up shortly thereafter by taking their own money proportionately. There was a lot of accusations that started flying that Lakeville was playing dirty pool and that... And then the other thing is, well, they just did the bridge plan on their own. That's not true. There were different concepts in play. Now, while that was happening or shortly thereafter, the region, facing its own difficulties in budgeting, spent six hundred and seventy thousand dollars in E and D funds to support operational costs in this current year's budget. That six hundred and seventy thousand dollars... If the region is going to make the adjustments and make the cuts to flow money down to the elementary schools, it has to come from somewhere. That six hundred and seventy thousand dollars is a demonstration that the region wasn't willing to do it this year. That money should have been left in E and D. It could have been there in the first year of regionalization. It could have assisted this whole process. But instead, not only is that money spent, we're not waiting, but because it was all spent on operational functions, that six hundred and seventy thousand dollars is going to have to be found again. And when we regionalize, the elementary school now shares in that liability. We don't have the money in the bank and we have to find the money again. Take it twice, that's one point three four million dollars in that decision that I don't agree with. I worry about things like that. It took months and months to try to get some harder financial data and as you've heard, there's been all sorts of squabbling and numbers flying back and forth even today. This all should have been settled a long time ago. Yes, I want the smaller class size. I desperately want the teachers. I was fighting for the teachers in the spring. I'll continue to fight for teachers regardless of how this turns out. Both sides have valid points. I'll grant you that. I have a lot of respect for John. I just want people to think things through and make the right decision tonight.
Thank you. You were waiting behind him. You're next, then you.
Hi, I'm going to try not to be redundant because some people have already said some of the things that I wanted. But before I need to say what I want to say, I was wondering, Mr. McCarthy, if you could just address the ability for the region to utilize its E and D funds to down into the local level? What's your ability to do that and can you...
Do you mean before regionalization or after regionalization?
Before regionalization. Really just to address Mr. Davenport's point about not utilizing the six hundred and seventy... Six hundred and seventy thousand dollars on the local level.
Just quickly on that, there are essentially three separate budgets. So E and D rests with the region budget, five through twelve. You cannot just lower E and D and transfer it into the locals. What has happened in the last year, I'll speak to that since I was here for the last year. We talked about the transportation assessment being reduced in Lakeville and then followed in Freetown. That transportation reimbursement had to be made up somewhere. The money that came from that reduction at town meeting, it was done at town meeting, that reduction that was done in the vote, went to the local elementary schools. If it wasn't for that, Lakeville would have lost more teachers last year. They would have lost an additional two, Assawamson, whatever. Working with the board of selectmen, they moved that money and we were fully aware that they were going to do that. What the regional school committee did to cover that is they had to cover it, which was over three hundred thousand dollars out of E and D, to cover that in the region budget. It didn't go directly to the locals. It can't. It went to the region budget to cover that money in transportation that was taken out. And that's why E and D, that's why we spent six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars last year because half of it went to cover that transportation reimbursement. So that's the short answer, is you cannot direct the money from E and D into the local budgets.
Thank you, and I apologize. My name is Faith Morninghan. I'm at Two Little Farm, over to the Lakeville. And again, I apologize if I'm redundant. I am for regionalization. I have a daughter who just graduated last year and I have a son who is a sophomore. And I know everyone talks about concerns about reduction in staffing at the middle school and the high school. I don't have any elementary school children. However, I fully believe in the studies that are out there that indicate that both short-term and long-term success of the students is going to be based on their ability to read, to write, and do arithmetic and that those skills are garnered during K through three. If they don't have them when they get to fourth grade and they start learning social studies and get in-depth with science, they will not be able to perform. I believe that our students need to have a strong foundation that we as a community need to make sure that our elementary schools are strong because if they are not, the cycle of special education costs is just going to spiral. Every child falls behind after third grade. It's going to have to be captured legally somehow to pay for their educational funding and that goes through special education, which takes away from regular education. And it's clear through the academic data from both the elementary schools that help is needed at the elementary schools. If we don't provide that help, we will continue to see declines not only in the elementary schools, but we will also begin to see a verbal effect throughout the intermediate school, middle, and high school. We need to fix the problem. We need to fix it now. Will regionalization solve all of our problems? Absolutely not. But it provides a tool for the administration to use to appropriately allocate resources. If we were a private business, which admittedly we are not, we would be looking to ensure that all processes were streamlined and that the best economies and scales were in place so that we could have true efficiencies within the system and make decisions that were in the best interest of the children, which is who we are here to talk about this evening. All three districts are not only involved in looking at regionalization to help solve the academic issues that we have with our children, we are looking at a process called RTI, which is a response to intervention, which is trying to capture students before they get to the point where they need to move to special education and need to spend more money as a district. We're using different types of skills in the classroom. We're looking at differentiated instruction and making sure that students who are on the cusp are getting the appropriate educational instruction that they need to be successful in the school system. A positive change for our children is a benefit for all of us for providing a strong school system and helping to ensure that our property values are sustained and that businesses want to come and stay in our communities. I believe full regionalization will provide a positive change for our community. We ask our fifth graders from both towns to come together in the fifth grade, to meet each other, to be civil and to work together and to put aside their differences. By the time they get to the high school, they have established relationships that cross both town borders. And as one high school teacher was recently quoted, he sees Free Lake students, not Freetown kids, not Lakeville kids, but Free Lake kids because both communities had developed those children to reach the region in fifth grade. It is our turn as town officials and citizens of both Lakeville and Freetown to show the students of the district that we can set aside any differences we have and we can work together for the benefit of all the students in both towns. I believe coming through town meetings the last couple of years that everyone who sits up here, the school committees, the superintendent, and the administration has made great strides in showing that we can work together as a community and that they can work together. It's our turn as citizens. Freetown has already said they are willing to work with us. At some point, we have to be willing to take the risk and do what is right for the children and stay in the game enough to make sure that everyone follows through with what they are supposed to do. Citizens of Lakeville, let's show the children of Freetown and Lakeville that we can work together, that we can put aside our differences and we can work together for the benefit of their education. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon?
Sharon, Sharon, this is a very, very serious decision that we are making.
Sharon, get the microphone.
It's a very, very serious decision we are making tonight. It's incredible the thoughts and questions that have come out tonight. We're making a decision that we are going to have to live with with our children, not for next year or the following year or the year after that, but perhaps for decades. And if you're following Bridgewater and Rainham at all, and what is happening there? They made this decision and they are regretting it and it's very costly for them to try to get out of it. That all being said, I wish that I had the trust that my elected leaders have. Nothing against John, our superintendent, but having been in this system as a teacher for thirty-five years, I've watched ten superintendents come and go in thirty-five years who do the math. They're here, they're gone. John probably has about another year and a half with us. About three years. I'm also untrusting of the fact, the way of placing our trust in people who are going to continue on with their careers. John's going to go on with his career, the business manager, our DSPL and all those other people. What I am concerned about also is the fact that we have added a tremendous amount of administration or administrative positions in the last six months. We've added curriculum leaders, we've added curriculum coordinators. We have taken job stimulus money and bought a part-time assistant principal at Assawamson School. All that money could have gone this year to lower some class sizes. I've sat through meetings listening for six or eight months now. I've heard that Mr. McCarthy would like to put on four classroom teachers in both towns. And a bunch of two classroom teachers. Last week, he said, and I'd like him to tell me if I'm wrong, he's not sure if he can put on any classroom teachers with regionalization. This is a really difficult decision. There's so many questions. I'm not sure we're ready to make this decision.
Moderator, I call the questions. You can. You're not opening the microphone. Yes, sir. Ma'am, ma'am, you're next. You get in line like everyone else does, ma'am. Mr. Markson?
Hi, Janelle Le Mary, Twelve Little Berlin. My two things, I guess, that I'm addressing are the constant topics of trust and local control that I've brought up. And this isn't a decision that I haven't thought about all the time. I have four kids. One is only three. The others are going into kindergarten, second grade and fourth grade. So as far as our school system goes, I'm in it for the long haul. And it matters to me. I toss back and forth. I'm for regionalization. I think that what we... The trust in local control that we keep talking about, local control has not done anything for us in our elementary school thus far. We're looking at classroom sizes of thirty kids. It's not going to get better next year. I know regionalization isn't something that, okay, we did it tomorrow, the schools are going to magically be better. September, everyone's going to have classes of twenty kids. But it's a step in the right direction. It's a change that we need to make. We don't all of a sudden throw our kids into the school system and then leave them there to be left after by people that we're never going to see again. Our kids that go K through four in Freetown and our kids that go K through four in Lakeville meet in fifth grade. So if either end of the spectrum fails, if they fail in Freetown, if we fail in Lakeville, we pay for it, five through twelve. The kids, they're all of our children, K through twelve. We need to take care of it. We need to start thinking that way. It's almost like we're married five through twelve. Need to get the other five grades in there and start making it matter to everyone.
Thank you very much. Mr. Marshall?
Hi, nice to meet you.
I'm starting to go blank over here.
The last speaker said that local control has done nothing for us. I think that's an overstatement, to put it mildly. Trust, money, teachers and class size, control... Trust, money, teachers and class size, control, all of these issues, very, very complicated. As far as trust goes, as Sherry pointed out, I'm sorry, superintendents, school committee people, boards of selectmen, they come, they go, trust can wax and wane over the years. That's why the wording has to be ironclad. Because in the end, when new people come in, that's all you have to look back on. And I don't think the wording is enough for me. As far as money goes, Nancy mentioned something about, you know, people saying, oh, it's all about the money. It's not all about the money. We're all in here for one reason: kids. Everybody's in here for the same reason. But we had better find out about the money, because without money, no one's going to get educated. Plain and simple. Much of this whole thing started way back months ago, and comments were made that we were going to get four teachers at Assawamston, four teachers in Free Town. That has dwindled down now to that's going to be a goal. Well, no one's got a crystal ball as to what the money's going to be, so I guess that's what it has to be. But this whole thing started with four teachers here and four teachers there, and we're going to take two out of the region. And Sherry pointed out about administrators being hired, or at least one at Assawamston, when I think that money should have gone to reduce class size. That's me. As far as the Free Lake thing goes, that's a given. If we regionalize, they're all going to be Free Town, Lakeville students. That's, that's not an issue. But I think with respect to what town council said earlier, let us assume for the sake of argument that he is correct. I don't think he's right, but what the heck do I know? I'm not a lawyer. But let's assume that he is. That doesn't mean that we have to agree to run across two districts and vote for people from other towns, et cetera. It doesn't seem like it's a, a very easy thing to do. I think it's complicated. Thank you very much.
You were next. You already spoke. Whatever. Okay, fine.
Just a quick question. I was wondering if the superintendent could speak to the administrative costs. It's been referred to several times about administrative costs being spent to hire administrative staff. I don't feel that people in the room have enough facts with regard to how that funding occurred. I also am not sure that people have an understanding of why a teacher was not hired instead with the specialist issue. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, just trying to be quick with that. At the, the region level 5 through 12, what we essentially did is we took the current money we were spending on administrative staff, and we reallocated it to become more efficient. We were spending too much at the high school and department heads, and we were not getting enough 5 through 12 curriculum articulation. So what we did is we took the exact same money budgeted, and spent, actually spent a little less, and spent it differently. That's all there was. We didn't add administration, we basically reallocated, believing we get a better product out of the money we're spending. And that's what we did. Secondly, in terms of what happened at Assawamston with the education jobs fund money, and this was a very difficult decision, and Laurie Hunter and I went back and forth on this, and we discussed this at length, and went back and forth at the school committee level, we talked about it. Do we put classroom teachers in place, or do we try to direct our, our money to serve in other ways? What we essentially did was we decided to move in another way, because in order to put one classroom teacher back in 2nd grade, we would have had to add a specialist by contract, we would have had to provide teacher planning time, and we would have had to also hire a specialist. We had reduced Spanish, we would have had to put something back in that place of Spanish in order to hire one classroom teacher, spending almost all of our education jobs fund and keeping none for next year. What we decided to do is hire a part-time stipended position as assistant principal. It's a current position in there. All we're doing is paying somebody a stipend and giving them a little extra time to support Laurie. She's in there with over 700 students. She has to supervise and evaluate that entire staff. She needed some relief and some support. Secondly, we hired a part-time literacy coordinator for grades 3 and 4, addressed reading deficiencies in grades 3 and 4. We didn't have that, we felt that was a targeted need. Thirdly, we hired some paraprofessionals, part-time, to provide some support. We are needed. So we saved some money for next year, and we directed our money to the greatest needs at the time. That's how we spent the money.
Thank you, sir.
Bob Dunn, Montgomery Street. I'd like to pick up on Sherry Barron's comments regarding your vote, took tonight's vote. Some people may not know that if this article's approved tonight, and the goals that the superintendent, administration have stated that would be fulfilled by full regionalization aren't successful, it's going to be virtually impossible to go back to what we have now. The name Christine Lynch has been brought up a couple of times tonight. I'd like to read part of the letter that she sent to the Rainham selectmen, who have been trying for the past five years to get pre-K through 8 grades back into Rainham, Richwater, Rainham Regional Schools.
Make it very brief, sir, because I really don't care what happened in Rainham.
A lot of people may argue.
Okay, well, make your point.
The point is that she wrote to the selectmen that a drastic measure such as K through 8 regional split runs contrary to a statewide policy promoting regional school districts, and any change in the structure of grade configuration of a regional school district agreement will require the approval of the commission of elementary and secondary education in addition to give up the towns.
I take it, I take it your point is that if you're in, you're in.
You're in. But I'd like to really address the issue of local control. And I take offense at Mr. McQueen's statement that it's a good thing to do away with more elected officials. I spent 11 years on the Lakeville School Committee. I'm pretty proud of that service. And one of the things that we went in, ran into back in the 80s was another proposal for full regionalization at that time, which again, both towns turned down. Subsequently, right after that, the regional vocational school district appointed a vocational education study committee to decide whether or not to do away with the pre-vocational offerings at Aponequit and have the towns join the regional vocational committee. The, after months of work, of which I was on in that committee as Lakeville's representative, the regional school district's representative from Free Town turned down the recommendation that Free Town and Lakeville seek admission to a regional vocational technical school district. The Lakeville School Committee voted to put a warrant on the Lakeville, to put an article on the Lakeville warrant to have the town appoint Lakeville's Vocational Education Committee. And I served on that committee for three years. And if it wasn't, if we had full regionalization had gone through back in the 80s, Lakeville would not be a member of the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical School today. And we'd be in the same S financially as Free Town is finding itself in, of paying a higher outside non-member tuition cost. So there is something to speak about in terms of local control. And I have a problem with giving what little control is left of our schools, more control to the state, and now under this proposal, more control, and giving away even more control by allowing the taxpayers of Free Town to make decisions about the formulation and direction of the end funding of our elementary in pre-K kids in the future. So I'm against this article.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Seamus.
Joe Seamus, Lakeview Heights, Lakeville. I have a couple of pages of notes, and I'm not going to bore you with it, I just want to make a couple of quick comments. If you look at your current region, it has a wonderful track record. We started in September 1st, 1959 with a tiny high school with 7 through 12, and we've grown, well, in 2002, we put in $24,000,500,000 for a new middle school. In the meantime, this school has been expanded. We have an intermediate school that was formerly a junior high school or middle school. So we have a good track record of expansion, and every time we've expanded in this region, it was for the benefit of our students. And I just want to remind you that last Saturday, we had a hall of fame ceremony. We adopted seven people. One posthumously, but the other six recall how wonderful an experience they had in this region, 5 through 12. And I've seen school committee people come and go. I've been around for almost 60 years, and I was at the school in 1959. And I dare say that all these people, well, maybe not all of them, but I would say 95% of them always acted in behalf of the students of our two towns. And when you walk the corridors of Aponequit, or you walk the corridors of Grants, or you walk the corridors of the new middle school, no one says, hey, that's a Free Town kid, that's a Lakeville kid. We're all Aponequit kids, we're all Grants kids, we're all intermediate kids. And I know my three daughters have come through this region, they're all professional ladies, and they still get together with their group, Free Town, Lakeville, and they don't distinguish between one or another. But I just want to tell you, as you just step back and say, I'm in a town where we have a 5 through 12 regional situation. Is it good or bad? You know it's darn good. Read the newspapers about our sports programs, read the newspapers about our academic programs, our music programs, and these kids are getting a fine education. But we want to get even better education. And it appalls me, it angers me. I consider it upsetting that at the local level, there are class sizes of 30 and 31. We've got to solve that problem. If we don't, we're shot changing a lot of kids. As one person said, a 3rd grader sitting in class today can't wait two or three years for people to make a decision whether they go to a class size and he can get more attention from their teacher and better instruction. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Joe Shaw, Island Road. I'd like to address this in some way. It's kind of a unique position that I'm grateful to be in right now. I was actually a Free Town school committee member when this whole issue came up this time around. And I had the privilege to move to Lakeville. I actually voted to not even get the grant to originally study this. And the reason why, and the amendment misunderstood at the time, was I thought it was so simple. It all came down to trust. And I've heard it several times here tonight, trust. Well, guess what? As adults, we've learned not to trust each other. But we are talking about constituency that we have in our town, in both towns that do not vote. It is our obligation to show them the trust, to show them that we're going to do the right thing. Yes, could there be a line or two in this, in this particular amendment that we could tweak? Yep, and you know what? We come back here every year. We have amended bylaws, we have amended agreements. This is an amendment to our agreements. This is not cut, written in stone. This is not something that we can amend and make better. This is something that we can do now. We can do the right thing, we can allow the process to move. The reason in and of itself is wrong, the way it's set up right now. One grade. Does anybody in a logical mind think that that makes sense? I don't think it does. Is there something better? Possibly, I think there is. Can we do anything about it right now? No. 550 guaranteed students, you might go. That's fine. There's also the 51% clause, which means that if Lakeville decided I want to send 3rd and 4th grade there, well, the town of Lakeville now incurs the entire administrative cost of that particular school. So yes, it's a protection that's in there. It's not one you want to do the way we're set up right now. It will hurt Lakeville if that has to happen. Assawamston is not set up. If you walk through those halls and you see how big the classes are, you may wonder if Laurie Hunter is able to keep things going in there the way she is. Put 35 kids in your living room, and think about how that's going to be. Yes, the 80s were a difficult time. We had no walls in Georgia Austin Middle School, as my English teacher from 8th grade would attest. We also went through double sessions, we had that done. It was a very difficult time for our towns. But we made the right decision to improve and get better. I'm asking tonight, make the right decision, think of what we can do for the future, not a couple lines on a piece of paper that we, as a town, always have a power to address.
Thank you. Mr. Markson, you stood and listened.
Yeah, moved the question.
With someone's seconded motion. Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I would like two minutes before the question's called. I don't see anybody else there.
I'm sorry, no, because while you're talking, three more people will walk off on this side. And I would like to have had everybody have a chance at it, but I think we have really explained it, and it really explained it. And I think we're ready to vote, and it's not discussable. What we're going to do right now is we're going to close debate. This is not a vote on regionalization. This is a vote to close debate by moving the question. And I need a 2/3 vote to keep everybody quiet. I'm going to try and do this by a show of hands, but if it looks like it's half and half, we'll have to have a count. All in favor of cutting off debate and moving the question, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Except for Mr. Scott, does anybody still want to continue debate? I do not see any cards raised. Oh, one card is raised. I declare that it has been passed by 2/3 vote, and we will go to a direct vote on regionalization. I will be asking tellers to count. Tellers, please rise. Did you count the stage? Yes.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, yes.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, yes.
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three, yes.
Fifty-one.
I'm sorry?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one, yes. You may put all your cards down now, please. All opposed to Article 1, please raise your cards. Yes?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Thank you, you may put your cards down, please. Sorry. The vote on Article 1, 205 in favor, 101 opposed. Article 1 passes by a majority. Please let there be 100 people left. Article 2.
Yes. Moderator, I move that the town vote will postpone the counter indefinitely.
Thank you, as a second. Motion has been made to postpone Article 2. All in favor, raise your cards. Thank you, put them down. All opposed to postponing Article 2, raise your cards. I see no cards. We have postponed indefinitely Article 2 unanimously. I'm going to wait for the numbers to get down a little bit before we try and count anymore. Mr. St. George?
I move that the town vote to accept Commercial Drive as a townway as laid out by the board of selectmen and to authorize the selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase or enter the domain, and easement or fee simple in the way, and any related easements as shown on the road layout plan drawn by Field Engineering Company Incorporated, on file with the town court, entitled roadway acceptance plan Commercial Drive and Riverside Drive, Lakeville, Mass., dated August seventeenth, two oh ten.
Thank you, is the motion seconded. Motion has been made and seconded. As maker of the motion, Mr. St. George, would you care to speak to Article Three?
The planning board approves this motion.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted electric, recommend this article, approval of this article.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about Article Three? Yes, sir?
I'm Sterrett, Crest Drive. I'd just like to know if the Finance Committee has looked at this and what would be the additional cost to the town for Article Three and Article Four while we're at it?
Finance Committee? Are you addressing this to the Finance Committee, Mr. Sterrett?
Through you either to the Finance Committee who, I don't know that it's...
In other words, who would, who would answer the question? Is our superintendent streets here? Yes, sir, you have permission to speak. Christopher Pack.
Just moderator, any additional costs would be, would have been, with being here roads, we're not worried about that for a long time, but the additional cost would be any sand, salt, plowing, that would be the initial cost this winter starting next week possibly, if this is accepted. I can tell you that the road was built in accordance with the subdivision regulations. The road is built very well compared to the roads in town that I've seen. It's, I think, from construction standpoints, it's a really well-built road.
Thank you, does that answer your question, Mr. Sterrett?
Just a dollar figure, you put a math...
Well, I don't know if you can estimate what plowing might be, but do you see any expended funds in the maintenance of the road, other than usual maintenance, not this time? Does that answer your question? Thank you. Joe?
That's Dubaneski in Hills Avenue. This article was brought up at the last meeting, both of these, and they were turned down by the planning board. I don't see anything here that would say why we should accept it this time. And also, there is still a lot of construction that has to be done. The question was raised before, that if there's construction going on and there's damage to the roadway, who repairs it? Last time they talked about the one road where the development is going into the train station there, where there's a lot of children, and they commented about the fact that the bus has to be, can't go up a private road that's stopped on in the main street for the kids. The other day, I seen a school bus actually coming down from that development with kids in it, so we know the buses are going up there. The question I got then is if with new construction, if any repairs are also building another apartment complex, okay, there's nothing in here that says that the developer is responsible to fix the road for any damages. There's construction going to be going back for the new developments and stuff like that, so where, what guarantee is there to the town that any damage to this roadway doesn't have to be picked up by the town, but by the developer or contractor? I see in the end here that's going to say, we don't have to fix the road that day damaged.
Thank you. Mr. Pack, I think you have to answer that one.
As with any accepted road, the developer would have to provide a driveway, a curb cut permit and/or roadway opening permit. As part of that, the developer would have to put a bond up the road, and that would be set forth by how much road cost you could disturb that amount. So if they're in the backside of that subdivision, it's going to be a larger amount than if they're in the first lot in that subdivision, because there'll be impact to that entire length of roadway.
Thank you.
So it falls onto the road.
Okay, in other words, if they do any cuts or any changes, they have to post a bond?
Correct. And it should be known that there are steps for all utilities out off the roadway, so they don't have to open the road, drainage, electric, gas, anything, already off the roadway.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Max?
Yeah, there was also a question about the bus. What happened there was the bus company didn't have permission to go down the road because the car is a private road, so it did get permission from the owner of the road to travel down that road, that's why you see it there today.
Thank you, Mr. Max. Yes, sir?
Yes, similar to Joe, but yeah, they do have to post a bond for driveway cuts, et cetera, but the construction equipment that was used in the first phase certainly would be perhaps less building on the second, obviously, but the equipment was very significant, that is, D-eight bulldozers, not smaller bulldozers that are used by typical builders doing a housing development, so that although the road will not be dug up, I certainly believe that waiting until it's done, because of the significant size of the equipment, is in the best interest of the town. Why should we take on any potential unforeseen damage to the road as extremely wide loads and heavy equipment travels down that road? I see no advantage to the town to accept a division, if you will, that is incomplete, and I believe it sets a bad precedent for the rest of the town. What prevents a builder from putting on the second coat of a town, second coat of the agreed-upon development, and he's built one out of thirty houses and say, that's great, now it's the town property? That typically has not happened in the past. They've kept a base coat and a finished coat is put on when the development is nearly complete. And this equipment is much different than a housing development. I would certainly see no benefit to the town to accept it now. I believe it should stay as a private road until it is built up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can't go oral, Kirkland Lane. My question follows up with Mr. Vaneski's question. We voted on this October eighteenth, I'm wondering what has changed since that time? I guess the question is for the selectmen.
Well, I think the planning board had it.
The planning board's article.
It's the planning board's article, so what changed the planning board's mind when they withdrew it last time and now they are putting it forth again? That's not my question, that's her question.
We talked it over with the developer, and the developer agreed to do some of the final articles that we had brought forth to them, and they seemed to agree upon everything in writing and taking care of any other questions that we had in the past.
Does that answer your question? Any other questions? Are you coming forward, sir?
Derek Maxum of Bond Street in Lakeville. My question would be for the planning board. This road was just talked up to the T Station within the past six months, I believe. It was under my understanding that a road has to be talked for two years prior to acceptance by the town. I just want to know why this road is different than others.
Or if that is true, okay.
Or if that is true.
Okay. Planning board? Oh, Chris, okay, Chris.
That was an overlay at my request. There was a lot of damage done by the construction that took place. The developer paid for that overlay, and as again, going forward with any future development on that project, the developer will require to replace the pavement that is there.
Okay, so was it your request?
Correct.
Thank you. Seeing no one before a microphone, we will put it to a vote, it's a majority vote. I don't know if I'll need the tellers, let's see. All in favor of Article Three, please raise your cards. I wouldn't need the tellers. Let's try it one more time. Okay, tellers, all in favor of Article Three, please raise your cards.
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seven.
Eleven.
Eleven. Thank you, may put your cards down. All opposed to Article Three, please raise your cards.
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-two?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-six.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, thank you, may put your cards down. Article Three is defeated, thirty-six in favor, ninety-eight opposed.
I guess maybe we should pass on this article, because it considers the same area of the road going in, Riverside Drive and Commercial Road.
You want to postpone it indefinitely? That kills it. Well, it means it. Unless you have a time in mind, yeah. In other words, the next time we have a town meeting, you can bring it up again with any changes.
Okay, fine.
Well, no, you make the motion, I can't make the...
I'll make the motion.
To postpone indefinitely?
Till the next town meeting.
There was never a motion made, so all he has to do is withdraw it.
Yeah, but the state wants us to do something with it. You can't withdraw it without a vote, so that's why I want to postpone it indefinitely.
I'll go look.
Okay, so within a second, he is, he is postponing it till the next town meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. No, he said next town meeting. All in favor of postponing till the next town meeting, raise your cards. Thank you, may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. There are a few. I consider that postponed indefinitely till the next town meeting to have passed by a majority vote. Article Five.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to convey a perpetual conservation restriction encumbering a portion of a parcel of land, said parcel located at Howland Road, Lakeville, and described in a deed reported through the William County Registry of Rights and Book one eight one eight oh, page two twenty-eight, and identified on assessors map block nine, no, map nine, block two, block five C, and said portion to be encumbered, being shown as conservation parcel and access easement for conservation parcel on a plan entitled Conservation Restriction Plan, a land at Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, prepared by prime engineering. A copy of said plan is on file with the town clerk to the Massachusetts Autobahn Society Incorporated or other entity qualified to hold a conservation restriction on such terms and conditions and for such consideration, which may be nominal conservation, on such terms and conditions, and for such consideration, which may be nominal consideration, as board selection needs appropriate.
Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. Would you care to speak to it, Mrs. Yates?
I would, please don't call me Mrs.
I mean, Ms. Yates?
Thank you.
It's late.
I know. We've done this before, there's a map on the back of what you have. When Route seventy-nine relocation in CBS was wanted to come to Lakeville, there was turtle habitat that was on that property, and we had to mitigation in order for the relocation of Route seventy-nine and the CBS to go in. And we own a six hundred and thirty-six acre piece of property on Howland Road, the calendar says we allowed the developer developing the CBS to put a conservation restriction on twenty-three acres, twenty-three acres, in exchange for fifty thousand dollars, consideration of fifty thousand dollars. This land was voted at a town meeting to be for conservation. Autobahn Society holds that. Now, going forward at Ted Williams Camp, we want to build new ball fields, two new ball fields at Ted Williams Camp. Once again, the turtles moved to Ted Williams Camp, and we have to do mitigation again for the turtles. We can do some on Ted Williams Camp itself, where the hiking trails are, can be preserved, so we can do ten acres there, and the additional ten acres would be put for mitigation, would the conservation restriction would be put on the Howland Road property in the amount of approximately ten acres to allow the graveling and the building of the ball fields at Ted Williams Park, Ted Williams Camp.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends this article by a majority vote.
Thank you, Mr. Markson.
I take it the subtext of your statement, Ms. Yates?
I'm sorry, Mr. Markson?
Was that title to this land is in the town of Lakeville?
That town of Lakeville owns this land.
Thank you.
Sir?
Yes, talking about an earlier article by Mr. Gobby in the paper, I don't know if he was referring to the Ted Williams Camp property, that he was unable to find turtles in that area. Are we talking about the same piece of property?
They, you mean when they did a turtle, they did a turtle sweep, as natural heritage would like.
Yeah.
And they sweep up the turtles, but they took them from the area, but it was done late in the year, that's why. October thirty-first is the last time you can do that, and they did it the week of October thirty-first, and they did not see any turtles, but it doesn't make any difference. It's established habitat for the turtles through natural heritage. We don't have any control over what natural heritage tells us we have to do. If we want to build those ball fields, excuse me, we have to do mitigation, otherwise we can't build the ball fields.
Well, I think, I think that at some point in time, we always talk about the turtle habitat, and we prevent builders oftentimes, if that was a builder wanting to put an expensive building in there, some property would have to be conveyed to him. I think because we have the property, it's easy for us to convey that to the Autobahn Society. But in fact, if there's no turtles on the property, why the hell would we want to do that? You know, in our wildest dreams, we're giving someone ten acres of property, why are we doing that?
We're not giving anybody ten acres of property.
We're conveying...
We're conveying a conservation restriction, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, well, let me, let me just...
You still own the property.
Excuse me, this is the deal. Ted Williams Camp, we own. The property on Howland Road, we own. In order to mitigate the turtles at Ted Williams Camp, we're setting a place aside on the property we own on Howland Road. The town owns both properties, just to, just so you understand.
Understand that. I think the town should stand up and say, listen, there's no damn turtles there, why should we convey any kind of things to the Autobahn Society? Thank you.
Then we won't be able to build the two fields, why take it out on the children?
Oh, do, all right.
I mean, that's the bottom line.
Or, you know, we're always saying, take it out on the children. If there's no turtles, why convey them?
Because the people in the state say they are, and we like it, not...
It's a matter of deep table.
Mr. Markson?
The question.
Mr. Markson, I'm going to ignore that if no one else is before a microphone, okay? So, I didn't hear that. I'm going to have to then take the question.
I was going to offer the question, follow the question.
Well, that's what he did. It doesn't, it doesn't make any point, there's no one in a microphone. We're going to move on Article Five, and we're not going to call any questions, okay? It's a majority vote. All in favor of Article Five, raise your cards. Thank you, put them down. All opposed to Article Five, please raise your cards. I see a few cards. I declare Article Five to have passed by majority vote. Mr. Markson?
Second.
Mr. Markson moves to dissolve. Is there a second? A second, all in favor, raise your cards. Thank you, may put them down. All opposed, I see no opposition. This meeting is dissolved. This meeting is dissolved.